Welcome to this session, December the 2nd, 2019. I'd like to thank everyone for being here. I know we've got a lot of friends and family, and I think we have some people in the other, in the anteroom also, but we appreciate you being here. It's an important meeting. We have new council people to be sworn in. So, thank you, everyone, for coming. I'd like to start at this time with a call to order, and our first order of business is the Reverend Jim Harry, St. Paul United Methodist Church. Everybody could rise, and after that, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Reverend.
Let us pray. Almighty and gracious God, you spoke the word, and all the worlds came into order. Who are we that you are mindful of us? And yet, you have made us just a little lower than the angels. Through your grace and your providence, you have allowed us to self-govern and to live in a free and open society. For that, we are grateful and indebted. We pray particularly on this evening, at the beginning of December, at the beginning of Advent, at the beginning of an extended holiday season, for your grace upon the members in this chamber, those who have finished and those who are beginning new terms. We thank you for their leadership amongst us. We pray your grace upon them, that they might have wisdom and discernment, that they might execute with grace the leadership of this community. We pray your blessings on our community, on this city and county, and in all things, we give thanks to you for your love and for your grace, which strengthens us, undergirds us, and upholds us. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Let's be seated. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
May I press him Broadway?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Councilmember Hamm?
Yeah.
Councilmember Rayco?
Here.
Our next item is approval of the minutes, the minutes of the special call session on July the 15th, 2019, minutes of the work session and regular meeting of October 21st, 2019, and minutes of the work session and regular meeting of November 4th. Call for approval.
Most careful.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Meetings are approved. Seeing no presentations on the list, we now have our public comment period. Our public comment period is for three minutes. Anyone can come up and say anything they want to, as long as they're nice. And you have a, if you will notice, there's a three-minute timeframe. It'll be on your calendar. Do we have any public comments at this time? Thank you, sir.
Good evening to these councilmen all here assembled. My name is Henry Gregory III, and I'm from Goldsboro, North Carolina. I was born and raised on South James Street. And I'm here to talk about, just for in my three minutes' time, the issue dealing with the number K or the, or the club that is going to be given grant, granted access on South James Street. First of all, I am a resident of, well, have been a resident of South James Street all my life, except for when I was grown and went into the Army. And I am not here today to represent anybody but the citizens that I have talked to. I have talked to the citizens on the, on the street, and there is no one that I have talked to that has even spoken almost that they agree with the club being there in the first place. Not at all. And also, I know that there's been some voting already done, and I wish Mr. Battle the best. I'm not here against Mr. Battle. But I am here for my parents, who live right next to the Old Elks Club. My father, his name is Henry Gregory Jr., and nobody on this council or the commission has talked to my father or my mother about what the safety measures are that's going to be put in place for Mr. Battle to run a successful operation. Nobody. They have sent a letter out and offered my mother and father to come, but how can you make decisions about this based off of a 73-year-old man who has Lou Gehrig's disease and is, and is homebound, and a 70-year-old woman who don't drive at night? I just ask that you will consider the fact that there has to be, if there's going to be voted for this to be an operation, somebody to lead them in getting the proper measures taken care of. I grew up on the block, and I don't know anyone, I'm not playing the race card here. I'm a black man. I don't know any one club in this city that is open for operations, black or white, beside a residence. Not one. Not one club in this city, black or white, is beside somebody's house. And I want to just say in my last minute or so, that nobody is addressing what Mr. Battle cannot, cannot, what Mr. Williams cannot be responsible for. And that's what happens on the streets outside of the club. No measures in place. No parking measures, no nothing. Let me just ask this, and I'm out of here. Who has asked or asked Mr. Battle to sit down with the family and talk with the families? Who has asked, has Mr. Williams or anybody asked, to just sit down with the families and, and talk about how to get this done? That doesn't help us any with this being just closing down at 12:00 and being open for events, which is not an accountable measure in the first place. But what is going to be done about parking? Who's going, who's going to help my mom maintain the fact that she got to go out there and pick up beer bottles that has been left in the yard from events that's happened over there? Who's going to, where are they going to park at? In front of Mom's house? Is anybody going to provide leadership that says what safety measures are going to be in place, or do we wait for something to happen that we cannot control?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other public comments at this time? If not, the public comment period is closed.
Wait a minute. You've got some votes.
Okay. Yes, sir.
How you doing? I'm Mr. Battle, and I'd like to comment on what the gentleman said. I, I respect every...
Give it three minutes.
Excuse me.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, sir.
I respect everybody in that neighborhood. I've been, I've been amongst them for 13 years. And I've, I've talked with Ms. Gregory. October the 25th, I stood outside to talk with her, I know 15, 20 minutes. I explained to her what the situation was, what, what, what the building was going to be. It's not actually going to be a club. This, I, I want to have a place where people could come and rent it for, for meet and greets, wedding receptions, family reunions, that type of thing. I've talked with her several times. We, we never really had a problem. And matter of fact, I have a parking lot that's, if you, if you would look at the, the site plan, that's set up for 40 vehicles. So, I'm not, I don't even, I don't, if I'm having anything, I won't even need the, the street parking, period. And if there's a problem with, with, with music, I've always told them, because a lot of times, I'm there myself, because music is what I do. A lot of times, I'm there myself, and I'm playing music. I always have told them, if there's a problem with the music, the number is right there on the door. All you got to do is call me. And she, and I, and if you ask them, they'll tell you the same thing. So, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, I'm not trying to disturb nobody. That's not what I do. And I know Mr. Gregory, and I know Ms. Gregory. So, I'm not, I've never had an issue with them, actually. So, and you, and matter of fact, you got, you got a little carousel that's like right there on the corner of Piney George. You're going to have the, the, the other place here on the corner of James and Spruce. I mean, that's, that's all in the same area. And I can imagine, I'm not even thinking about what's going to be from Spruce to Elm on both sides of Center, you know? But like I said, my, if, if I need to sit down and talk with anyone, I'd be more than glad to. I mean, I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with it whatsoever. Whatever they willing to accept, or whatever we can work out with each other, don't have a problem with it. But I'm not, like I said, I'm not trying to bring a problem at all. It's not what I do.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Any other people for private comment, public comment?
My name is Constance Coram, and I just wanted to say that on a couple of occasions, I've had the opportunity to visit and to be a participant or citizen at the establishment. And whenever I went, each time that I went, there were gentlemen that came out to greet me, and whenever I left, there were gentlemen to see me to my car. During the times that I was there, I never saw anyone walking around with beer bottles or any other kind of containers. I'm not saying it does not happen, but what is the likelihood of any of us going into a club and walking out with a, a container? That's very unusual. And I can say with the development that is going on downtown, that I do not see that there will be a problem with this facility being open. There are not very many facilities for us to attend. Right now, my children will not come here to visit Goldsboro, because there's actually nothing for them to do. And I understand that this is just going to be a, a place that's open until 12:00 midnight? 12:00 midnight? That's nothing. We have the, several clubs right there on Center Street that are open much later than that, and as the gentleman has already established, there are a couple more bars, and Councilman Hamm has one that is open right near the vicinity. So, I don't see why there would be a problem with another facility open in that area. So, I do ask that you all would reconsider your claim not to allow Mr. Battle to have this place. You say you want to build up Goldsboro downtown. This would be another area of which you could do so. So, I ask that you would reconsider. He's already been in business for the last 13 years. There's not been any kind of reports from what I have been, I've been here for 17 years. I've never heard of any police coming and having to stop anything that's going on. I have not heard any negativity, and nor have I heard anybody mention anything than a few bottles that have, that were out on the street. I do ask that you would reconsider and allow this man his opportunity. He's been trying for 13 years.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Please, may I press him?
Yes.
I'd like to make a clarification to the statement that the lady just made. Councilman Hamm does not own any business in Goldsboro that serves alcohol or any other material things. I have no business, retail business.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, my name is Tom Gil, and I am the daughter of Mr., and his name is Henry Gregory. And my comment is, we don't have a problem, because Mr. Battle, he sees us, we speak and everything. The problem I have is, like the young lady just stood up and said, I've lived with my parents until I got married three years ago. There's been times that we've had to call the police in the middle of the night at 12:00 or 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock in the morning, because we've had people sitting on our brick, just running off at the mouth, making noise. We've been outside and asked them to leave the property. We woke up one morning, and a man was peeing beside my parents' car from the club. We woke up the next morning and had to pick up bottles and cans. It's not a problem if it closes at 12:00. That's not the problem. The problem is, is my dad is very, very sick at death's door, and my mom is too old to have to go through a lot of stuff. Now, if we didn't know that it was just going to be a social thing, and that's, that's fine. I'm not commenting on Mr. Battle's desires or anything, but the comment that was made as far as there's never been a problem, that is absolutely positively not true. My parents went out and bought the two fences they have, cost them $5,000, just to stop people from coming in their yard when they have things over there at the, at the Elks Club.
Okay.
Cost them all right at $5,000. I have receipts at home if anybody wants to see it.
Okay.
So, that's the only problem we have. We don't have a problem with a, with a, with a social thing, a wedding reception, and we don't have a problem at all with that. But the comments that's being made, the comment that was made as far as nothing has been going on, that's absolutely not true.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Public comment period. Seeing no one else, public comment period is closed. We now go to consent agenda items.
Sir, I think that there's a video that's going to be played prior to us going through the consent agenda.
Yep.
The IT...
Yeah, we plan on doing that departing comments section, sir.
Okay.
Before we swear in the next meeting.
Okay, great. There goes the departing comments.
Okay, so consent agenda items B through J, with the exception of D, are presented for council approval.
Move to adopt.
Items B through J, consent items, move to adopt. We'll have a roll call vote. Except D.
With the exception of D.
Need a second.
Exception of D.
Which has been removed for the next council meeting.
Okay, second.
Second.
We have a second?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Because this is a roll call. Roll call.
Oh, roll call.
May I start, Tim Broadway?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamm?
Yes.
Councilmember Rayco?
Yes.
Okay. All those items are approved. We have moved one item, item K. Item K is CU-12-19. It's Henry Battle. East side of St. James Street between Spruce Street and Pine Street has been moved to...
Individual action.
He's going to discuss it.
I will discuss that before you just get me get to the...
Ms. Collins will brief it.
Item K is CU-12-19, Henry Battle. The property is located on the east side of South James Street between Spruce Street and Pine Street. The applicant's requesting a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a place of entertainment with ABC permits. As part of this request, separate site plan approval is required. The property is on Central Business District, and the site is located, or is the location of what we know as the former Elks Lodge, and the physical address of the property is 312 South James Street. In 2007 and 2008, City Council denied conditional use permits to operate a place of entertainment with ABC permits and without ABC permits respectively at the subject property. In 2010, City Council approved site and landscape plans to allow indoor freely market to operate upon the property. Site plan approval is valid for one year from the date of City Council approval. Since the applicant never commenced development of the property, the site plan expired, and since then, the property has remained vacant. On July 15th of 2019, Goldsboro City Council amended the city's unified development ordinance as it pertained to bars, nightclubs, pool halls, microbreweries, places of entertainment, both public, private, and non-private with ABC permits. The following regulations were approved that pertain to places of entertainment. Within the area of the CBD, which is the Central Business District, and this property is zoned, bounded by the south side of Ash Street, the east side of George Street, the north side of Elm Street, and the west side of William Street, there shall be no minimum separation distance from residentially zoned or developed property. A minimum of 50 feet minimum separation distance shall be required for standalone churches or schools. For the remainder of the CBD, not described in the boundaries I just mentioned, the minimum separation distance from the residentially zoned or developed property, standalone churches or schools, shall be 100 feet. In the CBD, there shall be no minimum separation distance between two such establishments. And within that area of the CBD, bounded by the south side of Ash Street, the east side of George Street, the north side of Elm Street, and the west side of William Street, there shall be no minimum off-street parking requirements. The property is on Central Business District, and a place of entertainment with ABC permits is permitted in the CBD only after the issuance of a conditional use permit approved by City Council. In addition, separate site plan approval is required. As previously stated, the site was the location of the former Elks Lodge. It contains an existing single-story brick veneer and concrete block building of approximately 3,400 square feet on one private lot. The building was built prior to the adoption of the city's unified development ordinance, and as such, building setbacks modifications are necessary. The applicant's floor plan indicates a main ballroom assembly area consisting of approximately 1,200 square feet, a seating area consisting of 13 tables, and 78 chairs, a kitchen, storage rooms, offices, and restrooms. According to the applicant, the facility would be available to rent for special occasions, such as birthday parties, ballroom dancing, wedding receptions, family reunions, and live entertainment. Hours of operation, the applicant, the applicant indicated reservations only Monday through Sunday, and no activities after 12:00 midnight. As previously stated, a 50-foot minimum separation distance shall be required for standalone churches or schools. Currently, the existing building is approximately 200 feet from a standalone church. Since the property is bounded by the south side of Ash Street, the east side of George Street, the north side of Elm Street, and the west side of William Street, there is no off-street parking requirements. The applicant is requesting a modification of the city's street tree requirement due to limited space and overhead utilities at the front of the existing building. The applicant is also asking for a modification of the required Class C, which is a 20-foot wide landscape buffer for approximately 100 feet along the northern property line, since the subject property is adjacent to residentially developed property. The existing building is located less than five feet from the northern property line, which is prohibiting meeting the, the 20-foot buffer. In addition, the applicant is requesting a modification of the required Type A 5-foot wide landscape buffer along the southern property line for approximately 100 feet, since the existing building is located less than five feet from the southern property line. The property is not located in a special flood hazard area, and again, the following modifications are being requested as part of the approval. Modification of the building's side yard setback from 15 feet to zero feet along the northern and southern property lines. Modification of the street tree requirement. Modification of the Type C 20-foot wide landscape buffer along the northern property line, and a modification of the Type A 5-foot wide landscape buffer along the southern property line. At a public hearing held on November the 18th, two people spoke in opposition to the request, citing prior incidents with noise, trash, and parking. Six people spoke in favor of the request, citing that the applicant has previously been denied without the opportunity to open his business. The planning commission at their meeting held on November the 25th recommended approval of the conditional use permit to allow the operation of the place of entertainment with ABC permits with the requested modifications. It is by motion recommended to accept the recommendation of the planning commission and adopt an order approving the conditional use permit to allow the operation of a place of entertainment with ABC permits, and approve the conditional use permit with the requested modifications. Any questions for staff?
Can you explain a little bit about the, the landscape buffer?
Along the northern buffer, or northern property line, there's a Type C buffer that's required adjacent to residentially developed property, and because of the building setbacks and existing conditions, they do not have 20 feet to plant. So, he's requesting a modification for that buffer.
Okay.
And the same for the southern property line due to the building, the building existing conditions and not having the appropriate width to install landscape material.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
This is an item requiring additional action. Do I have a motion to approve?
Any discussion? We're going to have any discussion?
After, after the motion. My motion's in a second.
Okay.
Second.
Do we have a motion?
Any discussion?
I think that since the, Mr. Gregory and Mrs. Gil, and Mr. Battle have all said that they were willing to sit down and discuss things together, I'd like to see our planning department, Ms. Collins, to set up a meeting between those, those two sides to see if they can come up with an amicable. I think we can get this done without any problems, just to make sure that both parties' rights are looked after. I don't have any problems with, with approving it at some point, but I'd like to see those two meet, those two groups meet, and, and come up with some, some, like I say, an agreement of what's going to happen, if that's fine with, with those, with both parties.
And this could come back in front in the next two weeks?
Yep.
For another resolution in two weeks, once those parties admit? Is that correct?
My motion on the table is approved as submitted by Councilwoman.
It's approved, yes.
Yeah, are you going to modify for, for change?
No.
Okay. Okay. This is an unusual situation in that we are missing two, two council members, and it takes four votes to approve any action. So, it will take four votes to pass that. So, I now call for, all in favor? And all opposed? Okay, motion does not carry. We'll take it the next two weeks. The next, the next item is departing comments, and we have a video, a short video, from Councilman Foster, who cannot be here tonight, and I think he has a short video.
First, I'd like to say, I'd like to apologize for not being there today, and I'd also like to congratulate Ms. Brandy Matthews on, on this historic win, first African-American woman city councilman in Goldsboro. Once again, I can't be there right now, but I have my dad, he's going to stand there for me and, and represent for District 4 as well, and I, like I said, I congratulate you, and I know you're going to do a immaculate job.
Thank you.
Our next item of business is organizational actions and ministry of the oath of office. Before I do that, I have a statement from, that I would like to read, and this is a statement from Mayor Allen's family. And I think it's important that we, that we listen to, to this statement. "We are here tonight to take the oath of office for the upcoming council, and even though Mayor Allen is not present tonight, he took the oath of office on November the 22nd due to a previously scheduled travel plan. However, due to him becoming ill on November the 17th, he was unable to travel, and he is currently under the care of doctors at Duke Hospital on an outpatient basis. We'll give you an update as soon as possible as when he will return to lead the city. The great, the Allen family is grateful for your prayers at this time, and hope you will respect their privacy at this time." This is a statement from the family, and I hope we all have Mayor Allen in our prayers, and hopefully, he'll be back with us soon. Prodosis is good. Thank you. Now, we're very fortunate to have the Honorable Erica James, District Court Judge, who will administer the oath to everyone, and I guess we'll start at one and go down the line. And welcome for family to come up, and we'll take pictures each time. Absolutely. Absolutely.
So, you're facing me, but you're also facing me. All right, good evening, everybody. Let me say thank you to the city council members for asking me to come and administer the oath this evening. And so, we'll start with Councilman Antonio Williams. His wife is here to hold the Bible for him, and if you would, please, place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. "I, Antonio M. Williams..."
"I, Antonio M. Williams..."
"...do solemnly and sincerely swear..."
"Do solemnly and sincerely swear..."
"...that I will support the Constitution..."
"...that I will support the Constitution..."
"...and laws of the United States..."
"...and laws of the United States..."
"...that I will be faithful..."
"...that I will be faithful..."
"...and bear true allegiance..."
"...and bear true allegiance..."
"...to the state of North Carolina..."
"...to the state of North Carolina..."
"...and to the constitutional powers..."
"...and to the constitutional powers..."
"...and authorities..."
"...and authorities..."
"...which are or may be established..."
"...which are and may be established..."
"...for the government thereof..."
"...for the government thereof..."
"...that I will endeavor to support..."
"...that I will endeavor to support..."
"...maintain and defend..."
"...maintain and defend..."
"...the Constitution and laws..."
"...the Constitution and laws..."
"...of said state..."
"...of said state..."
"...not inconsistent with..."
"...not inconsistent with..."
"...the Constitution of the United States..."
"...the Constitution of the United States..."
"...to the best of my knowledge and ability..."
"...to the best of my knowledge and ability..."
"...and that I will faithfully..."
"...and that I will faithfully..."
"...discharge the duties of my office..."
"...discharge the duties of my office..."
"...as council member..."
"...as council member..."
"...so help me God..."
"...so help me God."
(applause) All right, Mr. Broadway?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have someone to hold the Bible for you?
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Good evening. Good evening. And she's brought her own Bible as well, so wonderful. If you would repeat after me, please. "I, William W. Broadway..."
"I, William W. Broadway..."
"...do solemnly and sincerely swear..."
"Do solemnly and sincerely swear..."
"...that I will support the Constitution..."
"That I will support the Constitution..."
"...and laws of the United States..."
"And laws of the United States..."
"...that I will be faithful..."
"That I will be faithful..."
"...and bear true allegiance..."
"And bear true allegiance..."
"...to the state of North Carolina..."
"To the state of North Carolina..."
"...and to the constitutional powers..."
"And to the constitutional powers..."
"...and authorities..."
"And authorities..."
"...which are or may be established..."
"Which are or may be established..."
"...for the government thereof..."
"For the government thereof..."
"...that I will endeavor to support..."
"That I will endeavor to support..."
"...maintain and defend..."
"Maintain and defend..."
"...the Constitution and laws..."
"The Constitution and laws..."
"...of the said state..."
"Of the said state..."
"...not inconsistent with..."
"Not inconsistent with..."
"...the Constitution of the United States..."
"The Constitution of the United States..."
"...to the best of my knowledge..."
"To the best of my knowledge..."
"...and ability..."
"And ability..."
"...and that I will faithfully..."
"And that I will faithfully..."
"...discharge the duties of my office..."
"Discharge the duties of my office..."
"...as council member..."
"As council member..."
"...so help me God..."
"So help me God."
Congratulations. Here and there.
Yes, ma'am. I have to make one summary. That's not a problem.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Congrats. All right, Ms. Brandy Matthews.
I come over here, I come all the way. We getting back in our old salon.
You all know that Brandy and I share similar history, right? First African-American female. And she's here with her parents to help her get sworn in, and they're gonna hold the Bible for her. If you would, please place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, repeat after me. "I, Brandy N. Matthews..."
"I, Brandy N. Matthews..."
"...do solemnly and sincerely..."
"Do solemnly and sincerely..."
"...swear..."
"Swear."
"...that I will support..."
"That I will support..."
"...the Constitution and laws..."
"The Constitution and laws..."
"...of the United States..."
"Of the United States..."
"...that I will be faithful..."
"That I will be faithful..."
"...and bear true allegiance..."
"And bear true allegiance..."
"...to the state of North Carolina..."
"To the state of North Carolina..."
"...and to the constitutional powers..."
"And to the constitutional powers..."
"...and authorities..."
"And authorities..."
"...which are or may be established..."
"Which are or may be established..."
"...for the government thereof..."
"For the government thereof..."
"...that I will endeavor to support..."
"That I will endeavor to support..."
"...maintain and defend..."
"Maintain and defend..."
"...the Constitution and laws..."
"The Constitution and laws..."
"...of the said state..."
"Of the said state..."
"...not inconsistent with..."
"Not inconsistent with..."
"...the Constitution of the United States..."
"The Constitution of the United States..."
"...to the best of my knowledge..."
"To the best of my knowledge..."
"...and ability..."
"And ability..."
"...that I will faithfully..."
"That I will faithfully..."
"...discharge the duties of my office..."
"Discharge the duties of my office..."
"...as council member..."
"As council member..."
"...so help me God..."
"So help me God."
Congratulations. Here and there.
Yes, ma'am. I have to make one summary. That's not a problem.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Congrats. All right, Ms. Brandy Matthews.
I come over here, I come all the way. We getting back in our old salon.
You all know that Brandy and I share similar history, right? First African-American female. And she's here with her parents to help her get sworn in, and they're gonna hold the Bible for her. If you would, please place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, repeat after me. "I, Brandy N. Matthews..."
"I, Brandy N. Matthews..."
"...do solemnly and sincerely..."
"Do solemnly and sincerely..."
"...that I will support..."
"That I will support..."
"...the Constitution..."
"The Constitution..."
"...and laws..."
"And laws..."
"...of the United States..."
"Of the United States..."
"...that I will be faithful..."
"That I will be faithful..."
"...and bear true allegiance..."
"And bear true allegiance..."
"...to the state of North Carolina..."
"To the state of North Carolina..."
"...and to the constitutional powers..."
"And to the constitutional powers..."
"...and authorities..."
"And authorities..."
"...which are or may be established..."
"Which are or may be established..."
"...for the government thereof..."
"For the government thereof..."
"...that I will endeavor to support..."
"That I will endeavor to support..."
"...maintain and defend..."
"Maintain and defend..."
"...the Constitution and laws..."
"The Constitution and laws..."
"...of the said state..."
"Of the said state..."
"...not inconsistent with..."
"Not inconsistent with..."
"...the Constitution of the United States..."
"The Constitution of the United States..."
"...to the best of my knowledge..."
"To the best of my knowledge..."
"...and ability..."
"And ability..."
"...and that I will faithfully..."
"And that I will faithfully..."
"...discharge the duties of my office..."
"Discharge the duties of my office..."
"...as council member..."
"As council member..."
"...so help me God..."
"So help me God."
Congratulations. Here and there.
Yes, ma'am. I have to make one summary. That's not a problem.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Congrats. All right, Ms. Brandy Matthews.
I come over here, I come all the way. We getting back in our old salon.
You all know that Brandy and I share similar history, right? First African-American female. And she's here with her parents to help her get sworn in, and they're gonna hold the Bible for her. If you would, please place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, repeat after me. "I, Brandy N. Matthews..."
"I, Brandy N. Matthews..."
"...do solemnly and sincerely..."
"Do solemnly and sincerely..."
"...that I will support..."
"That I will support..."
"...the Constitution and laws..."
"The Constitution and laws..."
"...of the said state..."
"Of the said state..."
"...not inconsistent with..."
"Not inconsistent with..."
"...the Constitution of the United States..."
"The Constitution of the United States..."
"...to the best of my knowledge..."
"To the best of my knowledge..."
"...and ability..."
"And ability..."
"...and that I will faithfully..."
"And that I will faithfully..."
"...discharge the duties of my office..."
"Discharge the duties of my office..."
"...as council member..."
"As council member..."
"...so help me God..."
"So help me God."
Congratulations. Here and there.
Yes, ma'am. I have to make one summary. That's not a problem.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Congrats. All right, Ms. Brandy Matthews.
I come over here, I come all the way. We getting back in our old salon.
You all know that Brandy and I share similar history, right? First African-American female. And she's here with her parents to help her get sworn in, and they're gonna hold the Bible for her. If you would, please place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, repeat after me. "I, Brandy N. Matthews..."
"I, Brandy N. Matthews..."
"...do solemnly and sincerely..."
"Do solemnly and sincerely..."
"...that I will support..."
"That I will support..."
"...the Constitution and laws..."
"The Constitution and laws..."
"...of the United States..."
"Of the United States..."
"...that I will be faithful..."
"That I will be faithful..."
"...and bear true allegiance..."
"And bear true allegiance..."
"...to the state of North Carolina..."
"To the state of North Carolina..."
"...and to the constitutional powers..."
"And to the constitutional powers..."
"...and authorities..."
"And authorities..."
"...which are or may be established..."
"Which are or may be established..."
"...for the government thereof..."
"For the government thereof..."
"...that I will endeavor to support..."
"That I will endeavor to support..."
"...maintain and defend..."
"Maintain and defend..."
"...the Constitution and laws..."
"The Constitution and laws..."
"...of said state..."
"Of said state..."
"...not inconsistent with..."
"Not inconsistent with..."
"...the Constitution of the United States..."
"The Constitution of the United States..."
"...to the best of my knowledge..."
"To the best of my knowledge..."
"...and ability..."
"And ability..."
"...and that I will faithfully..."
"And that I will faithfully..."
"...discharge the duties of my office..."
"Discharge the duties of my office..."
"...as council member..."
"As council member..."
"...so help me God..."
"So help me God."
Congratulations. Ladies and gentlemen, you're in the place of office.
Judge James, I would like to thank you again. That was a lot of swearing in at one time, and we appreciate you doing that, and we're glad we're up here and you're down there, 'cause that doesn't happen at all. We're happy, and thank you very much.
Glad to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one other organization action, selection of mayor pro temp for next year.
Since, since the mayor has not been here for the last few weeks, and we don't know exactly when he's going, when he's going to come back, I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we keep Mr. Broadway on as mayor pro temp until the time that we can, we can have the mayor here.
A second, that's it.
Okay, we have a, we have a, a motion and a second. Discussion?
Yes, sir. Ladies first.
Can I ask who has already served as mayor pro temp so far? I have. We all have. We've been here eight years. Okay, so it, it seems more logical to me that we allow Councilman Williams to serve while moving forward until the mayor returns.
I second that motion.
We have a motion on the floor and a second at this time. We have a discussion at this time.
You gotta...
We gotta deal with the first one.
We gotta deal with the first motion.
Yes, the first, we had the first motion.
The first motion.
That's right.
In accordance with the first motion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Second motion carries. That's the motion. That item finished, we have city managers report.
Okay, sir. I'd like to congratulate every council member for their election and their reelection. I look forward to working with you all, so thank you for serving. I'd like to thank the City of Goldsboro employees for the lights up. That was a tremendous event. Very pleased with all the events around here. It's a, it's a heck of a city y'all got running. And they have another parade coming up this Saturday, 4:00 to 6:30 p.m. is the Christmas parade, so I highly recommend you all come see that. Thank you.
At this point in time, I am going to hold back the comments of each of the council members, and I have two resolutions to read. Neither of the people are here, but I'd like to read this. The first is a resolution expressing appreciation for services rendered by Kathy Bass as an employee of the city in Goldsboro for more than 14 years. Kathy Bass retired on December the 1st, 2019 as an executive assistant with the Goldsboro Police Department of the City of Goldsboro with more than 14 years of service. Whereas Kathy began her career on February 16th, 2005, as an Office Assistant Two with the Goldsboro Police Department, and on August the 9th, 2006, Kathy was promoted to Office Assistant Three with the Goldsboro Police Department. And on August the 1st, 2007, Kathy's position was reclassified as a Senior Executive Support Specialist with the Goldsboro Police Department. Whereas on January the 8th, 2014, Kathy's title was changed to Executive Assistant with the Goldsboro Police Department, where she served until her retirement. Whereas Kathy has proven herself to be a dedicated and efficient public service who gained the admiration and respect of her fellow workers and the citizens of the City of Goldsboro, whereas the mayor and the city council of the City of Goldsboro are desirous on behalf of themselves, city employees, and the citizens of Goldsboro of expressing to Kathy Bass her deep appreciation and gratitude for the services rendered by her to the city over the years. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and city council of Goldsboro that we express to Kathy our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in her future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated into the official minutes of the City of Goldsboro and shall be in full force and effect from and after this second day of December. I have a second resolution and...
Need a pro temp?
Yeah.
Need to offer that for adoption.
Second. Do I have a second for adoption? Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Resolution 2000, for 2019-106. This is for Councilman Bevan Foster. Whereas Bevan Foster has served this community in the City of Goldsboro well in numerous capacities, including four years as a member of the Goldsboro City Council representing District Four since December 2015, and whereas these years of service have been marked by exemplary dedication to the best interests of the community, as he has worked constantly for the betterment of its economic, cultural, and aesthetic development, whereas during these years of service, Councilman Foster has gained the admiration and respect of local officials and citizens for his untiring efforts in improving the lives of citizens in District Four, and whereas this term of office, during this term of office, Councilman Foster has served in memory of Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, Law and Finance Committee, TC Colley Community Center Board, and various other special project committees. Whereas many projects have commenced and been completed by the city during Councilman Foster's years of service, including construction of the Multi-Sports Complex, new fire police complex, replacement of Fire Station Four, sewer rehabilitation, street resurfacing throughout the city, the Center Street Streetscape Project Phase Two and Three, and the renovation of the TC Colley Community Center. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Goldsboro that the mayor and city council express to you, Bevan Foster, on behalf of themselves, city employees, and the citizens of the City of Goldsboro our appreciation and gratitude for your unselfish, devoted, and invaluable service and contribution rendered to the council and the City of Goldsboro in the many capacities in which you have served. And be it further resolved that we offer you our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good helps in your future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated into the official minutes of the City of Goldsboro and shall be in full force and effect from and after this second day of December 2019. Offer this for... Second. Second. All in favor, raise your hand. Ladies and gentlemen, your new slate of office.
Judge James, I would like to thank you again. That was a lot of swearing in at one time. We appreciate you doing that. We're glad we're up here and you're down there, 'cause that doesn't happen at all. We're happy and thank you very much.
Glad to do it. Thank you.
We have one other organization action. Selection of mayor pro temp for next year.
Since the mayor has not been here for the last few weeks and we don't know exactly when he's going... When he's going to come back. I'd like to make a motion that we keep Mr. Broadway on as mayor pro temp until the time that we can... We can have the mayor here.
I second that, sir.
Okay, we have a... We have a motion and a second discussion.
Yes, sir. Ladies first.
Can I ask who has already served as mayor pro temp so far? I'll ask you.
I have. We all have. We've been here eight years.
Okay, so it seems more logical to me that we allow Councilman Williams to serve moving forward until the mayor returns.
I second that motion.
We have a motion on the floor and a second at this time. We have a discussion at this time.
You gotta...
We gotta deal with the first one.
Okay, we gotta deal with the first motion, Dave.
Yes, the first. They had the first motion.
The first motion.
That's right.
In accordance with first motion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Second motion carries. That's the motion. At item finished, we have city managers report.
Okay, sir. I'd like to congratulate every council member for their election and their reelection. I look forward to working with you all. So thank you for serving. I'd like to thank the City of Goldsboro employees for the lights up. That was a tremendous event. Very pleased with all the events around here. It's a heck of a city y'all got running. And they have another parade coming up this Saturday, 4:00 to 6:30 p.m. is the Christmas parade. So I highly recommend you all come see that. Thank you.
At this point in time, I am going to hold back the comments of each of the council members and I have two resolutions to read. Neither of the people are here, but I'd like to read this. The first is a resolution expressing appreciation for services rendered by Kathy Bass as an employee of the city at Goldsboro for more than 14 years. Kathy Bass retired on December the 1st, 2019 as an executive assistant with the Goldsboro Police Department of the City of Goldsboro with more than 14 years of service. Whereas Kathy began her career on February 16th, 2005 as an office assistant two with the Goldsboro Police Department. And on August the 9th, 2006, Kathy was promoted to office assistant three with the Goldsboro Police Department. And on August the 1st, 2007, Kathy's position was reclassified as a senior executive support specialist with the Goldsboro Police Department. Whereas on January the 8th, 2014, Kathy's title was changed to executive assistant with the Goldsboro Police Department, which she served until her retirement. Whereas Kathy has proven herself to be a dedicated and efficient public service who gained the admiration and respect of her fellow workers and the citizens of the City of Goldsboro. Whereas the mayor and the city council of the City of Goldsboro desires on behalf of themselves, city employees, and the citizens of Goldsboro of expressing to Kathy Bass her deep appreciation and gratitude for the services rendered by her to the city over the years. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and city council of Goldsboro that we express to Kathy our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in her future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated into the official minutes of the City of Goldsboro and shall be in full force and effect from and after this second day of December. I have a second resolution and...
Mayor pro temp?
Yeah.
Need to offer that for adoption.
So... Second. Do I have a second? For adoption. Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Resolution 2000... For 2019-106. This is for Councilman Bevan Foster. Whereas Bevan Foster has served this community in the City of Goldsboro well in numerous capacities, including four years as a member of the Goldsboro City Council representing District Four since December 2015. And whereas these years of service have been marked by exemplary dedication to the best interests of the community as he has worked constantly for the betterment of its economic, cultural, and aesthetic development. Whereas during these years of service, Councilman Foster has gained the admiration and respect of local officials and citizens for his untiring efforts in improving the lives of citizens in District Four. And whereas this term of office... During this term of office, Councilman Foster has served as a member of Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, Law and Finance Committee, TC Colley Community Center Board, and various other special project committees. Whereas many projects have commenced and been completed by the city during Councilman Foster's years of service, including construction of the multi-sports complex, new fire police complex, replacement of Fire Station Four, sewer rehabilitation, street resurfacing throughout the city, the Center Street Streetscape Project Phase Two and Three, and the renovation of the TC Colley Community Center. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Goldsboro that the mayor and city council express to you, Bevan Foster, on behalf of themselves, city employees, and the citizens of the City of Goldsboro our appreciation and gratitude for your unselfish, devoted, invaluable service and contribution rendered to the council and the City of Goldsboro in the many capacities in which you have served. And be it further resolved that we offer you our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good helps in your future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated into the official minutes of the City of Goldsboro and shall be in full force and effect from and after this second day of December 2019. Offer this for... All in favor, raise your hand. So it be resolved. The last thing we have is...
Councilmember comments.
No comments. We'll start at this end.
I want to say congratulations to Taj Pollock and Brandy Matthews for coming on to our council. Look forward to working with both of you. And again, Brandy, being the first black female is history. Congratulations.
I just want to thank those of you that came out tonight to witness this historic event. And also offer my prayers and best wishes to our mayor for speed of recover... Recovery and return to the city council.
If you would just give me a second to take this all in, if you don't mind. So I want to say thank you guys for being here tonight. And I hope to see the room look like this moving forward because you matter. And you've heard me say that well over four months now on the campaign trail. You matter. I matter. We matter. We all make up Goldsboro. Me being elected represents the fact that we are ready for something different. And different is what is gonna happen. To Bevan Foster, who, whether you like it or not, brought awareness and the impact that he made while he served on this council would be a part of history, Goldsboro's history, moving forward. And I am so honored to follow behind him. And I truly know that I've got some really big shoes to fill. To the council. I heard all of us speak to unity and how beautiful diversity is. And I would have to agree. Now those words should turn into action. And I think this council shows that diversity is important. Representation is important. I look forward to working alongside each of you. We were elected. We are here. We are a team. So I'm looking forward to the next four years, serving alongside each of you. To District Four. District Four, thank you so much for having enough faith in me to elect me as your representative. Very early in this election, the odds stacked against me very quickly. There were a lot of attacks. There was a lot of mudslinging. There was a lot of politics and politicking. But we're not gonna speak to the negative. We're gonna speak to the positive because... You elected me to serve and I count it in honor. And understand, Councilman Foster used to say this all the time. I need you to show up to fight with me because I'm gonna fight for us best I know how. I've said it many times. I'm gonna give it the best I got and then I'm gonna give the best of that. That is my promise to you. I have already secured our first district meeting, which will take place on March 29th. Don't worry, I'm not gonna give you the details tonight. Mailers will be going out to you very soon. So for all of you who are in this room, be sure to tell your neighbors and tell your friends, all of District Four, March 29th, we will get together as a district. And we are gonna create a momentum and a temperature that is going to change the entire City of Goldsboro. Thank you for all of my supporters, families, and friends who stood side by side with me throughout this entire campaign.
We love you, girl. Amen. Amen.
Thank you. Because not only was I there alone, you guys took some of the heat as well and you never wavered. And I appreciate that. And I am going to honor you through what I do sitting in this seat. Thank you, Goldsboro.
First, I want to begin by thanking God for entrusting me with this task of being a liaison for my constituents, as well as an integral part in the unifying of the council. Next, I want to thank my family, not limiting this term to biological family, but the countless individuals that I have grown to have relationships with throughout my campaign, which later led to this victory. I want to remind everyone that this night is not about me, but the people that made it possible for me to get here. Namely, my constituents within my district, my supporters that never wavered their support towards me throughout this process. But most importantly, my students at Goldsboro High School that got registered to vote and encouraged their parents to do the same. I also appreciate the countless doors that were open for me as the sun went down, as well as the individuals that distributed my literature and conveyed my objectives and purpose in the various areas that I did not get a chance to cover. In conclusion, I want to thank my colleagues, as well as the department heads that worked diligent with me to make this transition as smooth as possible. I can assure the citizens, as well as the council, the intentions... My intentions are working amongst the council that is not based on divisive tactics or predetermined perceptions, but a council that feels that all communities are of the utmost importance and will work to ensure that our employees receive the best benefits and experience to take this city to the next level. I was gonna stop there, but as I was doing my vote for mayor pro temp, I heard some undertones and some things that didn't sit well with me. So I want to let the council know not to assimilate me with my predecessor that sat in my seat. As I was sworn in, my name is Taj J. Pollock and not the person that sat here before me. So my vote is based on what I feel was the best transition to usher us into the new year. Nothing against Mr. Williams. He would be an excellent mayor pro temp. But since we currently have a person in office that is fulfilling this seat, I thought that would be the best transition. So I wanted to make that public. Thank you.
Well, this is my third term. We've never had this many people coming out for results of an election. But I would like to say the election's over now. It's time to get to work. And it's time to be together. And it's time to keep this city moving. If you will look back eight to 12 years from now, you will see where we were and where we're going now. And thank goodness for what everybody said. We'll work together as a team. I don't know any teams that win. All you had to do was look at the Washington Redskins yesterday and see what happens with a team that doesn't work together. We've got to work together. We've got to throw our differences apart. And we've got to take care of each other. Right now's the time to take care of each other. We're a little bit wounded. And we've got to take and look after each other. And so let's do that. And let's think together and let's think as Goldsboro. And we've got some really smart people up here. So let's move on and do things and do them together. And I think we'll win. We're winning right now. Let's keep winning. And thank you very much and thank everybody for coming. This is wonderful.
This is a bittersweet moment. I'm thankful. I'm so thankful to all of my constituents, those that voted for me. Those that didn't vote for me, I'm still in your corner. I'm still willing to work with you. Just give me a shot. You know, things that happened in the past that you may have thought I could have done better, let's communicate. Let's open that door. I do everything when it comes to caring. Some people say I wear my heart on my shoulder, but I love people. You know? What's wrong with love? If you all know Common, Common believes in love. That's one MC that's well grounded. And when I think about District One and I think about Bob Marley, I think about his song, "One Love." Well, District One is basically one love. That's gonna be something that I focus on, us pulling together and loving each other, loving our community, and building it to the level it should be. That's gonna take help. That's gonna take us doing things that normally we wouldn't do as council members. We're gonna have to think outside the box. I'm gonna ask each and every one that's in my district, those that aren't even in my district, to lend a hand and help out. So I'm depending on all of y'all, not to just show up for this day, to continue to show up. District One to me is valuable. All of Goldsboro is valuable to me. You know? We gotta change the dynamics here. Fourth poorest city in the United States. How do we get there? By working together. So I'm gonna do like I always try to do. I'm gonna throw out my olive branch to these council members, to the new council members. I didn't take anything personal, you know? We're gonna work together. That's my goal and objective. Now, we're not gonna always get along, you know? But that's just how families do. Families fight and then they come back together and talk again. So I just want to thank everyone. I want to thank Yvania for having my back on those days where there was some hard decisions to make. I want to thank the employees here. And I just want to thank, you know, the City of Goldsboro. Let's move forward. Let's come out of this fourth poorest city in the United States. Let's come out of this poverty. And let's work and let's get these kids working this year. Let's build some attainable housing. Let's clean up this city. God bless you. Thank you.
Believe it or not, we did all this in an hour and got it done. As of right now, meeting's closed.